And what we're going to do is have the candidates first tell us a little bit about themselves. We'll ask some questions and then you guys can ask some questions at the end.
I've had the pleasure of meeting a lot of you personally as we've walked around and talked to folks, but for those I have not yet talked to, I'm Mike Dunlap, running in the special election here on May 1st. So my family and I have really enjoyed getting involved here in town through various events and more recently when I was appointed to the town council. I grew up here in Lovitzville and so this is actually very special to me because I grew up here just off of Wyner Road where my parents still have their farm. And I was very active in Loudoun County 4-H showing livestock and my parents are still out there raising sheep and chickens and Christmas trees. I also worked on, through college and then high school, worked on a lot of farms in the area, Mill Creek Farm, built a lot of fences. I worked for the local Southern States Co-op as well, so really got to know a lot of folks around the area. It's very exciting to be here. After I completed high school, I went down to Virginia Tech, studied animal science, dairy science, agricultural economics, and later earned my master's degree from George Mason International Congress and Policy. I think one of the things that really led to next steps, my background gave me the opportunity to work for the House Agriculture Committee in Congress where I focused on rural economic development, international trade, and food aid policy. So leveraging the background and the knowledge and the relationships that I've built over the last 15 years, I wanted to say that I'll be able to use those relationships to work with our state, federal, and local leadership to solve the problems that are facing our town. I became involved because I wanted to help our community maintain the small-town environment that we all love. I'm delighted to be here today and I appreciate all of you showing up and look forward to the discussion that we have.
So my name's Renee Edmiston. I've been a resident in Lovitzville for 11 years. I live in the Kings Ridge sub-division. Very active in the PTO when my children were young in the elementary school. I'm on the board at our HOA in our community. I love Lovitzville. We've had such a great time getting to know our neighbors, participating in events. I'm the cookie lady that makes all the awards every year for Oktoberfest. A little bit of background about me, I work at Loudoun County Day School, been there 10 years. I'm a split dual-role person. I work as a teacher. I also work in administration. So I have a pretty large background in systems. So they tagged on to me when I came there and I have taken the lead on implementing a lot of procedures to go paperless, implementing a student information base, student information system, implementing all kinds of online payment processing for our parents. And that's one of the things I want to bring to the community. So in working in the town, my goal is to look at the business side of it. That's kind of my background. I like business, I like the operations. When my children were small, I used to go to the meetings all the time when Mayor Walker was there. I had great interest in participating and maybe being on the town council at that time, but knew it wouldn't work with my family and my community and my children. So I have one in college now and then I have my daughter who's going to be a senior next year. So this is the time I thought that would be most appropriate for me to dedicate the extra time I have in my schedule to the town and hopefully serving the community and the needs of the town in the future. All about small-town, fiscal responsibility and accountability. Those are my three main areas that I want to hopefully bring to serving you as residents.
My name is Nicholas Hayward. I'm running for town council. I think you guys all knew that, right? So the whole point of me being here and really coming together with some other residents in town to run is for me to really take what I've learned and what my background is from the military side, from growing up on farm environment, is also the community that I grew up in and try to merge that into what we have here today in our town, which we have a lot of that. My background, as I already touched on, was an Indiana farm boy, grew up in a cornfield. There were some trees off to the east of us, but not a lot. It's a lot of corn and depending on your, maybe beans. But the whole point of that type of upbringing is being able to utilize what you have with what you've got. So we've got equipment, trying to make it last as long as we can. We've got a little bit of funds, trying to make those last as long as we can. It's really important to make sure that we are not trying to always give ourselves raises when we want something. We need to make sure that we're spending our things properly, make sure that we're actually going around and communicating with our neighbors and making sure that what we're doing is really sought out after in the community. And then if the community wants something, explain to them what they'll have to do in order to get it. That's either we're going to have to increase taxes or we're going to have to increase water rates. Those are things that you have to communicate to your town. It's not something that you just drop on them and then you get 500 people knocking on the town hall door, hollering about issues. So to kind of roll back to some of military, I grew up always being proud of the military, being proud of the people who served us and stand up for this. I did that for four years. I joined a little bit later in life, which helped me realize that military wasn't necessarily for me after four years, but then I took that training and what I got out of the military and actually came to Virginia. That's what led me here.
My name's Chris Hornbaker and for those that have been in western Loudoun for a while, yes, I'm that Hornbaker. My father will be retiring from the Rural Economic Development Department for the county this year after serving as the extension agent for Loudoun County since 1987. My mother was a previous middle school teacher in Blue Ridge Middle School, so the mayor Walker I know is Elaine when I was about five years old. I miss Elaine when I was about five years old. I grew up in Clark County. I appreciated growing up on a farm, raising sheep and cattle, being active also in 4-H. But even though I did not live in western Loudoun, as you can tell through my folks, I did have roots. I stayed in, when I was about the size of that baby right there, we stayed over in Percival, so that's the only roots personally. But when I met my wife and got married back in 2006, we wanted a place. She was in Gainesville, I was over in Charleston at the time in my first house. Lovitzville was that place and for its rural economic, or its rural character and the ability to provide affordable housing for us to establish the family. That's been 12 years. We have an 11-year-old, a seven-year-old, and an eight-year-old. We're very active in the community and in 2012, I think you mentioned something about building fences. Great fences make great neighbors, unfortunately not-so-great fences make you go to the town hall. So that's how I made my way to the town hall. And since then, I've been to more town council meetings than some town council members. I'm a member of the planning commission and I've been very vocal about protecting and understanding the impacts of decisions that are made in that town hall to the citizens here. And that's why I want to serve you going forward.
I'm actually originally from New Mexico, went to college in Pennsylvania, ended up here when my wife originally got a job in Winchester. And when I started commuting into Washington, then moved here to be close to the train. That was 24 years ago. And we've lived in the same house in Lovitzville for 24 years and it's the only home my two daughters have ever known. I don't have a personal agenda or a political agenda for this town. What I want to do is what's best for the residents of the town. And I spent eight years on the planning commission, leaving about the time Chris moved to town here because I was overcommitted and was not spending enough time with my family. Well, my younger daughter's now in college. I have more time available and I'm not nearly so overcommitted. But I am dedicated to doing what's best for the town, trying to, as others have said, trying to keep the costs as manageable and frugal as possible while providing the services we need and making sure that the town itself is a place that people want to come to, whether it's for events like the Oktoberfest or Mayfest or simply to come here and chow down in one of the restaurants. We want to make it a great place to come, but we also want to make it a great place to live and keep it a great place to live for everybody in town. And that is my goal. And the more attractive we make it, the better people we can attract here into the town. And I'm really looking forward to working for that.
My name is Matthew Schilling. For those who don't know me, I have been a resident as of 2009, so we'll have about nine years here this summer. I live here with my family, my wife and our two children. Our kids go to the Lovitzville Elementary School. I wanted to say kind of where we came from. I am originally from Percival, deep roots going back about four generations so far, which I've been able to find. I had planned on staying in Percival my whole life, but that all changed when I met my wife at the time and she changed my heart forever. So at that time, we decided, she became my fiancee, we decided to move into Leesburg and we got to the point where after our marriage, we wanted to, we wanted to start our family. And a two-bedroom, one-bath condo just didn't fit that plan. So we started looking around and we came out here and I said, "Why don't we check out Mel's Top and Grass as I was a kid? Things have changed a lot, let's go check it out." So we ended up checking around and we come out to Lovitzville and I had been out for a few years. I hadn't seen the growth or anything that had been started. I was still very quiet here. All of Isingtown hadn't been built. It was very subtle and we loved the small-town life. And we found it the place that we wanted to call home and be able to raise our family. For my professional background, I'm an IT manager. I manage all the technology aspects for the group that I work for. I'm also a project manager implementing new programs and any changes with any current programs. I'm also a technical account manager for a multimillion-dollar program that we have with the VA. As we planted our roots here, my wife has gotten involved in planning commission. She currently serves and she's been on for about two years now. She'd bring home documentation and plans of what's going on with the town. I've been involved in that aspect and I've been very interested in actually finding time now where I can get my voice to come out and be of everybody within town. So I know that events are getting bigger every year. We have Mayfest and we have Oktoberfest that are really driving our tourism here and I love that. I love how our community comes together and we can show everybody how a community comes together and we show love and friendship to the community as one another. Thank you.
It may be a broad question. What's the biggest challenge facing the town right now and what's your approach to that?
Biggest challenge? Let's see. So I've been attending town council meetings for the last two budget sessions, last couple of years, and some planning commission meetings as well. And in that timeframe, what I would state as the biggest challenge in the town is infrastructure. The infrastructure that we're dealing with, it's not many of us who have moved into the new communities, it's our old part of town. One of the biggest things we have to remember is sustainability is based upon our ability to pay for our infrastructure maintenance as it ages. So we have quite a bit of pipeline in the ground that needs replacement. It's beyond its lifespan and we have many projects the town is facing. Our CIP plan has grown in one year. Last year, our five-year CIP plan was 1.9 million and this year it's 4.1 million. So we have to really look at every project in there and determine what is the most important project for our residents' daily living needs. And we need to prioritize based on those. If we have a severe water situation going on with our pipes and the possibility of them failing that will affect a homeowner's ability to access water, that needs to be at the top of the list. Not making the center of the town have ping-pong tables and a splash pad for children. We really, really need to focus on sustainability for our residents and their daily living. Not that I don't want to see projects for us as a community, whether it be sidewalks or other things to make us a beautiful town. We do have to make sure we're measuring our projects carefully and taking care of the things that need to be taken care of first.
I would echo a lot of what Renee said. That's a lot of things that I'm pushing for as well. We have issues within our town right now that potentially could hit us at any moment. Prefer to, you can refer to them as a ticking time bomb. Ticking time bomb is 40-year-old pipes that are 45-years-old and they're sitting in all of our old-town environment for our infrastructure. It's estimated, and this is estimation, these aren't what we know it is. It's estimated that $1.2 million per mile is what it's going to take to replace all that out. Now, as we hold off and do that, we've got inflation and other things that drive those costs up as we deal with it. Currently, if any of you had a time to be at the town council meeting last week or potentially watch it online, they identified inflation rates. In 20 years, we haven't raised some of our fees in town, and we'll probably get at that later on. We haven't raised some of our fees that we charge other homes to actually tap into. So if we rate, in 20 years, that inflation rates actually are, on average, if you look at two of them, it's about in the 40% range. So we got to look at these things, we've got to be cognizant of them, we need to actually be aware of them. A lot of our town residents don't know that we're living on borrowed time right now with our, with our infrastructure. We've got to be taking care of that. That's really where you take, you weigh, you weigh your scales and do your balances. You can't start reaching into the residents' pockets and not explaining to them why and doing a good job of doing that.
Walking around the different parts of town, the first thing that comes up is your water bills. And it does touch on some of the infrastructure and the major projects, namely on the sewer side, we have $5 million worth of projects in the next 10 years that we are going to have to fund. Additionally, based on the availability fees that Nick referenced, we have not changed them since 2002. Clark County has them at $30,000 in Berryville and Point East and there's a lot less development than western Loudoun. Percival's is at $47,000. Ours has been parked at $22,000 since 2002. The proposal this year to increase water and sewer rates by 3% is going to increase $33,000 in revenue to the town. Yet, by increasing the connection fees from $2,000 to $4,000 and having the 36 homes that are coming in next year, we will have $72,000 in revenue. It doesn't impact the folks that are here after they've seen their water bills increased by 31% over the last three years based on the plan. They've done in three years what the experts say that we should have been doing in five. And so I'm going to use those, my plan that includes increasing water rates, not only or increasing availability fees and connection fees to offset the ever-increasing water bills that we, we as residents have to face.
I'll concede that the infrastructure is a huge concern, but I would also like to add that 20 years ago when I started on the planning commission, one of the priorities of the town was to actually make this a pedestrian-friendly town, to try and bring the community together to make it a more livable place and essentially to increase our tax base, to increase our, you know, the residents paying into the property taxes, the businesses paying into the property taxes. And so I'd like to make sure that we emphasize as much as possible business development to bring in more businesses to raise revenues for the town and to work on projects within the rest of the town that actually help provide, increase the livability of the town itself. Not to say that the water and sewer isn't important, it's vital. We have to have the water and sewer. But I believe that we should never, we should not ignore the rest of the town and the other priorities that we really should be paying attention to. Sorry, minor derailment there. Thank you. We need to emphasize also building community. The town events have been, the Lovitzville Oktoberfest and the Mayfest are self-supporting. The town is managing the finances for those, but they, but they are basically paying their own way and relying on volunteer, volunteers to carry out that activity. So I want to make sure that we keep an eye on the balance throughout everything that we do in the town. Thanks.
I would have to go along and I know the water rates and availability fees and the connection fees, they're all up talk and a lot of us can agree that it is a huge issue for us. We do need to see, I am glad to see what we're seeing with the connection fees. We're seeing where we can adjust those and try to offset some of the increases that we're proposing and that we're going to see in the near future. I won't go into a whole lot of that as it's already been explained, there's a really good explanation about that, so I won't go and beat that to death. But infrastructure is correct. We also need to look into that with our capital improvement projects. We need to look at what's going to be providing the most benefit for the most amount of people. Need to prioritize our projects. We do see our declining, we see things breaking apart. If you go down Loudoun Street and some of these side streets, it's in some of the older neighborhoods that I live in down on Fox Meadow, Nikki live over that way. So I mean, you can see where that fine line between all the new neighborhoods are and how well their, all of their infrastructure is on their parts of town, but on the older parts of town, we really need to start paying attention to how we can create safety, safety measures with, whether it be sidewalks or pavement or whatever we can do to kind of offset some of the issues that we're seeing with creating our mobility and being able to get around town.
Most folks here have indicated our utilities, infrastructure is one of the most pressing needs that we have as we face the town, but it's not only the need, it's how we pay for it. We talked about prioritizing, what projects can we either put off or restructure or find more efficient ways and less expensive ways to finance those projects. Right now, we are paying for some legacy mistakes on an aging system, okay? Most of the folks here weren't around town 20, 30 years ago when some of the infrastructure was put in place and because of the mistakes made then, we have to pay for it out of our pockets. That's not fair, but that's where we are today. So what we need to do is make some hard choices. It goes back to our tax rates, goes back to our water rates. And there are some who think that the proposed 6% water rate hike starting next year is okay. I don't agree with that. I don't believe that that's correct. I think we need to find different ways to restructure how we're going to pay for the needs on the horizon. We have a three-pronged approach coming up to help, at least on the water bill side, where we're looking at new meters that can give us greater efficiency in reading, going to third-party billing that can make sure that our bills are accurate and timely, so we're not getting hit with late fees or bills at the last second, and also looking at some monthly options so that we're not trying to pay for six, $700 water bills all at once. So I'm looking forward to digging into each of these issues as we move forward.
Looking back at the past year or two, what's the best thing the current council's done, the rest of the Nick?
Okay.
And what's one thing you've done differently that they've done?
Oh, one thing? Okay. I guess, I guess the good things to look at, and the town council has actually been doing a lot of things that a lot of the residents have been going to them and asking them about proposing. And Mike, you referred to some of those things, which is we're looking at our billing structure and they're actually looking at moving the billings away from quarterly billing so that you can actually monitor your bill a little bit easier. So if you had a water over, which is in the first part of your bill, you know about it because you're being billed more frequently versus you continuing the standard water usage you're using and then you get a $600 or $700 bill after three months. That's a really good thing that they're looking at. They're also looking at different tax, tax spectrums and also in addition to that, they're starting to become more aware of the infrastructure that's there and the infrastructure that's failing. Some of that's being brought, forcefully brought to attention because they're having water leaks and pipes are breaking and things of that nature, which are forcing them to pay attention to that. And other things that are also bringing them to attention is the town reaching out and saying, "We need better sidewalks and we need more walkability." There is infrastructure and they're talking, communicating about that. One of the things, then that is a really good thing. One of the things that they're not necessarily doing that I would really like them to do is to actually do a phased approach and a priority approach to the capital improvement plans as a whole. We need to be watching what we're spending in the general fund and seeing if that can allocate the mismanagement issues that we've had over the last 20 or 30 years in the other infrastructure stuff. So I'd really like us to see us do that.
So it's very easy to say what the best thing that the town council did over the last year and a year and a half to two years. It's asked Sam Fims to come back and serve as our town manager. I cannot say enough how much he has reached out to folks that historically have had differing opinions from the popular opinion that was in town hall. He sought myself out and we had from a dinner at Andy's to breakfast down at Percival. He was looking for ideas and once we actually talked with each other, we found that his ideas, the ideas of the town council and the priorities of the town council and the intent of those ideas weren't that far off. I say this because I think the most important thing the town council is going to have to do over the next two years is replace Sam. We had some issues that had been identified personally with the previous town manager. I liked that he looked so far out and was long-term in his perspective, but I think there were some short-term issues that we needed to address right away. And as a town council, I will work to identify a manager who can come in and do that. On what I would have done differently, it's easy to say, I was the first one to speak out against the trash fees. I was the first one to speak out against the $61,000 going from the utility fund into the general fund for the wireless antennas that sit on the water tower. Again, they increase your bills, they get $33,000. They had already taken $61,000 that was paying for some of your water bills. They're doing that, they're reversing those decisions this year and I like that they're doing that in this year's budget.
In terms of the town council's best features over the last year, I'd have to say that I'm really impressed with their ability to bring the budget into, under control, to try and be as frugal as possible and, and develop long-term planning goals. One of those is, as I mentioned earlier, that there is an emphasis on business development and to try and bring in more businesses to, to affect the town. Because frankly, if business on a given property lot brings in a lot more revenue than a resident does, and that's, that's more helpful to, to, to the town's revenues than, than you might well imagine. I think it's six times, six times the revenue. I'm picking that out of very vague memory. The, and the other thing is that we're, we're seeing plans to, to develop a lot more in the capital improvement plans, to, to develop priorities as, as indicated, to try and figure out what's, what are the best things to do for the town, whether it's water, sewer, business development, you know, and other infrastructure, sidewalks and the like.
Lately, I've seen more push towards common ground and that's, and that's really a plus here. We really need to have people with different points of views on town council who will not only just debate what's going on, we don't need to have one half agree with this half, but we do need to make sure that we have every single point of view that's taken into, taken into whatever the issue is, whatever the proposal is, any changes that are coming. We need to be able to understand the background of what people can see. It's not only seeing it what it is now, but we need to see it for the future. And I think that town council is getting it, getting to a place where we can all come together and find a common ground in that. One of the things that I would do different is, I know there's been a lot of issue with being able to understand what proposed changes are, what changes are coming, what's going to change. I think town council could, could do a lot better with, with getting everybody together, maybe creating additional forms of, not additional forms, but additional times of meet instead of having a meeting here and a meeting here to hear on it. We need to put more effort into making sure that you understand what's coming, what we need to change, and more input saying what you want to see changed. How can, how do you feel that you can change it? And I would like to work on that if I like.
Some of the comments that others here have made in terms of what the council has done and should be doing, I think some of the long-term planning, looking down the road, looking at some of these projects, new water tower, new piping, sidewalks, whatever is on the horizon in the CIP and other issues, that's very helpful. I think we need to do better in terms of how we're going to plan to pay for those things and plan in the short run to make sure we're balancing our books and making sure we've got the right things in place. One of the common themes here is how do we spur the economic development? So when we think about what the council should be doing better and putting more effort into, I think we need to do more to attract businesses to Lovitzville and figure out what that means. I know there've been disparate efforts, different groups of businesses have gotten together, but one of the things that I did recently and will continue to do is start a business round table to bring businesses in the room in a casual setting so we can hear what the town is doing well, what we can do better, sometimes just get out of their way, let them run their businesses, but also to help promote their businesses and figure out what attracts people to invest in Lovitzville, what attracts people to invest in our community and our town. We have a lot of commercial development that is zoned or spaces that are zoned for commercial development. I think we need to work on finding sustainable businesses we can put in there so we can grow our economic base, which will give us more options in the future to pay for some of these projects that are critical to our town.
Good things I advocated last year when I found out our meeting minutes were a year behind on town council, two years behind on planning commission. I pushed because that's a priority. As a resident, you need to know what's going on. If we're not publishing minutes, we don't know what's going on. So good thing, they're catching up on minutes. Town council's done a fabulous job getting those caught up. They've implemented AV capture so that we as residents can now see and watch the meetings. It's important to communications, definitely a plus for the town. Events, some great things they've done is they've reorganized events to take some of the pressure off our staff so that they can get minutes done. So they've reorganized this into a volunteer mode. And the other thing that they've done is due to our audits, they know we need to be able to audit these events. So they are now putting in measures to actually financially track the expenses on those events. As far as what I'd do differently, I'd change our debt ratios. We're paying a half-million a year on the utility side and principal We're paying a half million a year on the utility side and principal and interest on loans. A lot of our availability fees is used to pay for those loans. They have loans planned five years from now when those availability fees go away because development slows down. We cannot go over our 3,500 cap unless you want to pay for all the roads in town. So debt ratios have to be dealt with, future expenses have to be dealt with, those need to be dealt with now.
What are some of the things the town should be doing or has done well or should be doing now on the business aspect?
Virginia, in Virginia, Western Loudoun has become one of the biggest hotspots for breweries and wineries. As a, as, speaking with Kelly Hinkle in the Rural Economic Development Department, she had actually made an offer to Lovitzville and the surrounding towns in Western Loudoun that they would actually fund a position split between each of the towns. It was funded, when we were looking to fund at $75,000 in Economic Development Director, it would have cost the town $16,000. I think it was an opportunity lost because people come to the county, but they have more resources than we do in Lovitzville. They have Visit Loudoun, that's probably one of the biggest tourist organizations in, in the United States and what, and best funded. They have people that come in to now Ashburn before Leesburg that say, "I can't afford Ashburn rates, I can't afford Sterling rates, I can't even afford Percival rates, but I want to start a business." And if we had the ability to say, "Well, you know what, let me get the Rural Economic Development Manager, let's talk about places like Lovitzville that are looking to bring those economic development activities and those business opportunities in town, and let's talk about what, how your town can fit within that small town and the surrounding communities."
The businesses that we've been attracting to town lately have been very heavily oriented on, on services, food and so forth, and I can't help but wonder how, what our, what our plateau will be on that one. But that said, the town needs to focus very, very strenuously on going after potential businesses and attracting them to town. Using the, the county and state resources is definitely a great place to start, but we need to take the leadership and do it ourselves. One of, one of the goals that was brought in years ago was actually connecting the bike path at Percival to the bike trail at, on, just on the other side of the river at the CN Open Canal Path. We've made a, a small effort to start, to get, to, to begin on the bike path within town, and I'd really like to, to see that continue further and provide an incentive for the, for the county to, to help finish that off. And my reason being to get all those guys on the bicycles coming through town, spending money. Yeah, we'd have to dodge bicycles. But that's, that's one aspect of, of something that, that could have a, a big effect because completing that loop, for, for one thing, would be a great way to, to attract people in, and I'd like to examine many other ways of doing the same.
We have wonderful restaurants here, and it's great to have a variety of places to eat. We have some wonderful services at the doctor, and we have chiropractic care, and we have salon de l'or, and we, we have all those things that are really great to have, you can walk to. I really enjoy that, being in a town that we are. Something that I see is that we're going to hit that spot where, do we need that other restaurant? What is it that we need that's going to keep people coming here that I'm going to say, "Hey, let me run down." Right now, we could say, "Let's run down to 7-Eleven, I need to go grab something. I forgot something for dinner." But what else can we do? We have Ace Hardware that opened up across from Brunswick. That's great, it's closer, but something like that could draw the business in town here. How can we make that happen? We need to work on how we can draw those types of services to where we don't have to travel to Leesburg Home Depot, we don't have to travel to Lowe's, we don't have to do that for the, for those quick items that we need. We need to draw those people in here, and working with our capital improvement plan is going to create a better business front, trying to get all, and the streetscapes are important to businesses because it allows people to walk, it allows safety, it allows transportation efforts, it allows it easier for people to get to the businesses. And hopefully with the capital improvement plan, we're able to prioritize our, our needs on how we can draw in for new business.
So I touched on it, it's all built on my last answer about economic development. I think one of the great advantages we have here in Northern Virginia, Loudoun County and Lovitzville especially, is we have access to a lot of the support industries that support our, our nation in the DC metropolitan area. We have some of those folks that work here in DC already, and those sorts of businesses require pretty robust infrastructure, broadband, all the utilities that we've talked about so that they can plan ahead and know what their rate structure is going to be moving forward if they move here to town. I think that having a diverse economic development is going to be incredibly important. We have a lot of wineries, breweries, there certainly are support services that can support those industries that I think would be well-suited here if not some of those businesses being cited in town. One of the other things we need to think about carefully is what do we take out of every business's pocket? We have taxes, whether it's a meals tax or just straight income tax and licensing fees that comes out of their pockets on top of the county taxes, the state taxes and federal taxes. So we need to think very carefully about what would attract somebody here? Why would they cite inside of town where they can pay additional fees if they can cite somewhere else for a lower rate? So when you think about those things, talk to businesses, talk to our regional and state leaders and make sure that we are providing an area that incentivizes people to come and invest here.
So economic development, just so you know, economic development accounts for approximately 40% of our general fund budget. It's very critical to us as residents to have good economic development. It offsets our property taxes by having them in the community. I will say that I think we do a very good job for our businesses that are here. We have one of the lowest meals tax rates in the area for them. They have our population here. Of course, there's not a whole lot between here and Percival, but they are attracting us, they're attracting Brunswick. I have friends that are always asking, "Hey, what restaurants do you have out in Lovitzville now? They're in Percival, they want to come this way." So that's a good thing. People are starting to talk about our town as a place to come to and use our services. One of the things we're lacking that I want to see happen, that I want to advocate for, and I will donate my time to help it happen, and that's to make a business association, whether it's a Chamber of Commerce or some type of business association, where businesses feel like there is something here for them. Business associations are critical for a business looking for a place to locate. If we don't have that for them, then right there, that's a detraction for them. So it shows that we have people doing things to, to build business in the area. The other thing that's critical, critical to me, it had been years ago, I don't hear it talked about much anymore, is connection of downtown businesses to new businesses. I think it's important part of our planning to make sure we're doing what we can to connect those businesses that are in the old part of town to the new part of town so that we're not losing business for either of them, that we're working together, like they said before, making a walkable town and making that, that happen. That's the most charming part of town to me, is the old town. So that's important for me.
Bringing a lot of growth to our town on a financial standpoint really helps us offset putting more taxes on the property taxes for the residents in the town. It also helps us take those funds and do all the beautification that we really need to make our town the town that we really want it to be. That being said, we also have to be cognitive of, cognizant, excuse me, of bringing more businesses in and knowing that the traffic that's actually going to flow in, that, that traffic is something we need to be careful of. We know that we want to put more, it's called, it's referred to as phase two, here next to velocity. We want more growth there, we need more business growth there, and we do need that. But we've got to be a lot of, we have to be aware of the traffic flow that we're going to be getting from that, and that traffic flow is going to be going around the squirkle. I'm sure you've all experienced, the squirkle is a fun place to try to cross at certain periods of time during the day. So we do need to, I agree, we do need to get walkability under control, but we also have to be aware of, if we've got an industrial park and we put in certain types of businesses in there, there are large vehicles, and those large vehicles need better roads and better trucks, not, excuse me, not better trucks, I think that's their job, but they need the proper infrastructure put in there that's going to support them. So that's one of the things we've got to be aware of. We want to make our town easy to walk, we want to make our town beautiful, and we want to bring this stuff in to help us keep the tax burden off of us. Got to make sure that we make it accessible for the rest of the community that we want to absorb in and come visit our town. So we got to be careful.
We always hear about, you know, the best, the most important thing is protect the small-town feel of Lovitzville. Protect the small-town feel of Lovitzville. What does that mean? What can the council do? What are the things the council can do to protect the small-town feel of Lovitzville? Why, for doing this growth?
I'm getting back to the walkability. Part of it is, part of my, my feeling of the small-town feel of Lovitzville is that people can actually walk from place to place. There is, there is no connection, for instance, from the school to the rest of the town. The sidewalk ends at, at the property line of the school. There's a lot of activity that goes on at the school, I mean, they're right down, down there now playing baseball. That's part of it. Another part is, is that we have a, a weekly newsletter that comes out from, from the town, from the town hall. Mayor Zoldos has been quite entertaining with that for the last several years. I really enjoy reading Bobby's letters, Bobby's articles and that, but it's also a great way of entertain, of, of sharing information, and we definitely need to make sure that we continue that, and that's been a very good way of, of getting information out for a lot of us. Another thing is, I've, I've seen another line about keep Lovitzville quirky, and the berserkle on the squirkle is a, is a good case in point. It was really sad that we weren't able to hold it this year because of, of weather events, but small events that, that actually bring, bring people together to build community are important because then we, we actually gather a bunch of people together, we get to know each other by more than just, you know, they're in that, somebody over in that neighborhood over there. So I, I want to encourage the sort of events that actually, that actually do provide that sort of community development.
So I would have to agree that going along the same lines as, as Will has here, when we talk about Loudoun Street, it would be fantastic to go to walk my children over from this side of the neighborhood and go directly off to the school. I spend time with my children in the morning, getting on the bus is great, but having that morning walk is, would be so beneficial to them, to me. So it would, it really is a really, really nice way to be able to include our older part of town. I call it the historic part of town, even though it's not officially historic with its heritage and characteristics. When we talk about that still, that project has not yet been planned, but it has been looked at. That does have a very high rate, very high price tag. We're looking at about $7.5 million in order to do that entire strip, get sidewalks, curb and gutter, and to redo that. It's not planned, but I would like to see how we can start figuring out where we should start planning it and how we can get earmarked money. I know it's, that, that's a further discussion, but earmarked money set aside for, for a funding for that specific project and others too. So careful planning and budgeting will allow for that. Maybe it's something we start out with small bits, I mean, but down the road as we get closer, it, it could change. So I would like to start looking into how that can get into a planned phase. I know the design has kind of been looked at, but we really need to start looking at where we can go with that. In Pennsylvania Avenue, right here where Backstreet Beruse goes down and we have Painted Pig, it'd be great to be able to have the walkability to go through there. There's been some talks, I was talking with Karen, our town engineer, where we may be able to get sidewalks into a point that they'd be able to get at least down to maybe on the other side of, right where the property ends for the town hall, so.
I would echo your, the thoughts that have been already shared about making the town walkable. I'd love to be able to push stroller down to Coffee Shop, Painted Pig, and not have people feel like they're going to run us over in the middle of the street or try to get over the gravel that's on the shoulder. So I think that's a big part of connecting our community and making sure that we can kind of get out and about without having to drive everywhere and find parking and so on. I think one of the biggest elements of keeping our town small and keeping that small-town feel, which is one of the things that really we love about being in Lovitzville, is our planning. And right now, we, we have our comprehensive plan that is intended to keep us under a cap of 3,500 people. The reason that's important is because VDOT will make you own your roads if you become a major town in the state of Virginia. We can't afford that, we can't stand a public works facility or anything like that. But it also helps us plan to say, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to stay small, we're going to stay rural, and we're going to invest in our town through events, through building our community." I think one of the biggest things that we should be doing as a council is not just showing up on Thursday nights for a meeting, but be out in the, in the community, be engaged with our friends and neighbors, have these resident-driven events that are not just town events, but are really driven and run by our residents. And I think that's one of the ways that we can come together and really build our community as a town.
To me, when the question was first asked, what makes the small-town feel of Lovitzville, two things hit me: size and people. That's what keeps a town small and feels small. As soon as you change size and more people, you lose that feel. We're a .81 square mile town, we're very small. We know we want to stay under that 3,500 cap. I think everybody can probably, most people can agree on that. What takes away some of that small-town feel is development. So let's think about that. Is it the commercial development? Do you want a mom-and-pop's? Or do you want big box? Do you want in your communities, how you build your little communities? We have little sub-hubs through here. You know, when it snowed eight inches the other day, there was a guy that went through the entire neighborhood with a snow blower, did everybody's sidewalks, the entire neighborhood. That's what builds small-town community and feel, is the people and the development. So my goal, sustainability, mom-and-pop's tend to last a lot longer than box stores. It's not something I want to see here, it's not what a lot of people don't want to see here, is box stores. You want to see the mom-and-pop's that creates a more charming atmosphere. I always relate to Shepherdstown in that area. They don't necessarily have sidewalks all over their whole area. It's a very old town, okay? They've survived, they have, they have challenges like we do. They have growth all around them, but they've stayed small-town and charming. So they're doing something right, hopefully we can do something right.
I'm going to actually grow upon what Renee said and make it a little bit more hit home for you guys. My point of that is keeping our town small. If we want to keep it small, how do you do that? Fiscal responsibility and managing the, the funds that you got and keeping them all tight. I, I, I want a small town. I came here because I want to live in a small town. I don't want to see this town turn into the other towns that are around us. But if we don't manage our things properly, you know how you change that? What they did a few, about 20 years ago, they started building. I live in that area where you, where the town built in. They built because they couldn't handle the taxes that they needed and they, they didn't want to hit the current residents there. So when they say, and we have reference to building out and expanding our tax base, that means annexation. That means building more homes next to us so that we don't have to fund all that. Keep the small town by managing your town properly and by putting things on priority. You don't do it by putting my wants and wishes and needs. We can get to those, but we have to have a good plan and we have to be aware of the infrastructure. I know you guys heard me speak about it before, but that's what happens. You get it, you get an explosion of bills and fees and loans that you've taken out, and you know how the town deals with it? They have to go and expand. So we've got to keep it small, and that's how we do it.
I live growing up outside of Berryville. I define a small town by the number of stoplights that are, that are in town. Right now, we have one, and that's at Chuck's. So I'd like to keep that number steady from here on out. In Berryville, I grew up with two, and that's what I define as a small town. But I see, I see an opportunity to keep a small town. Right now, we're at about 2,200 people. If we were to build out, we'd be about at 2,800 people. When I served on the Planning Commission Committee for Residential and Land Use, I actually implemented and suggested a policy that we, through our ordinance, define a standard residential one, two and three zoning district to be what it is today. The low-density, one-house, set eight, 8,700, 7,000 or 6,000 square foot lot. If somebody wants to bring in medium-density townhouses, duplexes and, and the sort, that they would come to the town and bring their project, that one project for that one property. We're not going to redefine the rules for that one project. Go to your engineer, draw up your plans, bring it to the town. The town would then have more control to be able to say, "Yeah, this aligns with what our comprehensive plan states," or it doesn't. And then we still allow that controlled building. Again, I, I see as not only those policies implemented, but the fiscal policies of increasing our availability fees to make it less attractive to developers as a way to keep our small-town small.
There's a well-known management consultant named Peter Drucker. He talks about organizational management. One of his key principles is called organized abandonment. He says, "Before you ever start thinking about doing something new, what are you going to quit doing? What is it that your bureaucracy has maintained for a long time that if you really stood back now and said, you know, we could do without that now?" So my question to you is, in the concept of organizational abandonment, what is the town currently doing that we could stop doing?
I guess I'd really have to go back and, and see and compare what we could stop and put the brakes on now. I guess I'd really have to go back and see and compare what we could stop and put the brakes on now. I don't have a project or anything that we're doing now that I could say or recommend to. I would have to go back, but I can definitely get you the answer on, break it down. I can give you the answer on what I would put the brakes on for you.
Yeah, it's a great question because I think at the heart of it is, what would you continue doing just because you've always done it? That's not a good reason to continue some action or some policy or what have you. One of the things I've been doing on the council, we just went through and put our not-to-exceed rates in. So what we had to do is go through each of the fees and look at them closely and see if they made sense, both at the rate structure and whether in absolute terms we should be charging a fee or charging a tax. One of the things that jumped immediately to mind was meals tax. Somebody said it's low for the region. There shouldn't be a meals tax in place at all. This is a tax on top of taxes. Yeah, it's a pass-through, but it still changes that value proposition. When you get your bill at the end of the evening, whether you're on a date or taking your family, if you're generous with your waiters and waitresses, they're probably tacking on 30 bucks, or I'm sorry, 30% to your bill. The money isn't going to anything specific. It's not there for a particular purpose. It was just ostensibly used to tax folks who might be coming into town, but I'm not sure that the evidence supports that. So the first thing I would do is look at our tax rates, look at what we're doing and pull it out of the pockets of our businesses and say, do we need to continue doing that? That's one specific example. I'd say, no, I don't think we do. I think we need to level the playing field for all the businesses, making sure that all of them can, you know, run their business the way they see fit without having to be, have additional taxes put on top of them. And I think the other thing we need to do is look at our admin costs and what the town is doing in providing services. We have a couple of core things that we do as a town. We provide water and sewer, which we'll continue doing, and we provide administrative support on a couple of different areas. So look at that and make sure that we're spending our time and our resources wisely.
To me, it comes down to needs versus wants. So if you have to do something, let's say today, let's say our pipes busted. We can't get loans. How are we going to do that? How are we going to do that without doing a special assessment to all the residents? That comes down to needs and wants. If I look at the budget right now, I made a recommendation twice now in the budget sessions to get an extra half-cent decrease in taxes for our residents. Our property assessments have gone up an average of 10%. A one-cent decrease is only going to take away 5% of that increase to you. So I'm recommending another half-cent. Town still gets another 2.5% increase in revenue from property tax that we will have to pay, but it takes a little that away. So what did I suggest that they cut? I gave them two things to look at. One was a $16,000, which is a $13,000 increase in our budget for marketing and tourism, and one was a $16,000 expense for transportation study, just to consider. Marketing and tourism, if you get yourself a Chamber of Commerce or a business association, they will start taking some of those expenses away. Those are things that I agree. You've got to get to line item and line item, and you've got to know exactly where you're spending your money and ways we can outsource that to other groups to help us. Are we spending things in events that the Ruritans or the Lions Club or any of our local community center can help us with? Those are things that we can go towards, try to work together.
How we attack that question is by communicating to the individuals in town. So when I've walked through, I've communicated with individuals on various social media assets and things like that. Seems to me, based on what I'm feeling in, is that what the town tells us and what they want us to deal with is our infrastructure. All right? So then we've got to explain, then we've got to hold off on plans that we've got in the next five years that are putting us at $2 million. And that would be things like putting in sidewalks and doing those other things. Or we communicate to you, the residents, and say, are you willing to have your taxes increased to go do these as well as deal with other things? You probably are seeing an echo chamber coming out of me. I like to make sure that we are taking the funds that we currently have and spending them properly. There's a lot of stuff in the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Improvement Project, however you want to refer to it as, on both sides of our revenue streams that we look at that have to be itemized and looked at. So in reference to that, I would say that we've got to look at the things that we've been able to survive with now and make sure that we're covering those things. So there are things that are planned out that we can see, that we can see in our five-year plan that's been handed out to us that need to be addressed and handed to the customers, to the residents. You guys are our customers, right? We work for you. So we need to make sure that we, are you choosing this or are you choosing this? I will do what you ask me to do and I'll work for you, but you've got to understand the give and take in this environment.
I redid a water comparison that was done by the town in 2013 to demonstrate that we're exactly 50% where we need to be and have gone from the second-cheapest water rates in the surrounding communities to the third-highest, only behind Percyville and Middleburg. But in doing that, I didn't call, I did research that was available to the folks, which I believe we completed the water and sewer rate at a clip of $160,000. And so I did the research utilizing the Walden Center for Public Service through UVA, the DAA, an engineering outfit out of Blacksburg, and I did it by calling the surrounding communities, their town council members, their mayors, and their staff. And in calling down to Middleburg, I found something that was very interesting. The study that we paid $160,000 for, I was asking whether rates are going up this year, and she said, "Well, why don't you give the mayor a call? Because he completed ours." So what I would like to stop doing is spending money on rates to justify decisions that either have already been made or need a public justification, and do the actual research ourselves. Put in the time, put in the research, get the information, make the comparison, make the decision, and move on.
I'm fond of saying, I don't know the answers, but as a librarian, my job is to find them. And being able to, or being tasked to actually go out and find that information ourselves is probably a very good priority to undertake. The question you said was, or somebody said, "Don't do things because we've always done them that way." 20 years ago, the town was paying out money for Oktoberfest on an annual basis to try and keep the event going and support it and so forth. It's now self-sustaining. The town has, you know, is no longer spending money to make sure that very successful event continues every year. And so that's a mark that we're doing some things very much right, that we're actually trying to control our spending in terms of not wasting money on something that can be done through other means. But it's going to take a lot of checking out every line item and finding out, you know, how useful is it? How essential is it? And we'll have to commit to making that on an annual basis.
Hate speech is defined as speech that attacks, threatens, or insults a person or group on the basis of national origin, ethnicity, color, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or disability. I know that hate speech is protected by the First Amendment, which means the government can't censor it. However, that doesn't mean that the community members need to tolerate it. Lovettsville has seen its share of hate speech recently in the form of KKK flyers and online in local Facebook groups. As an elected official, how are you going to handle hate speech? How are you going to create an environment in which all members of this community feel safe?
So I won't make it understandable. Most people know. I was an admin for an alternate group, and I wouldn't say alternate, I was admin for a secondary group within Lovettsville. That group was referred to as the original Lovettsville 20180. The intention of that group initially was put together to allow the residents in our town and our surroundings, code area, communication and be able to communicate about any aspect of their life, either it be town issues, personal issues, sidewalk issues, whichever it needs to be. We did, at a point in time, have specific outliers in our community that were doing their best to offend other individuals in our community. What I did at the time was I looked at the scenario and I looked at the environment, and I wanted to make sure that how we protect our town is by identifying the sound. And I'm going to take a little bit more than a minute and a half, I apologize, because this needs to be addressed more. The scenario that came about is we had people posting things that were really trying to agitate people and getting them upset. What I wanted to do was make sure that everyone had their right to speak, but also you needed to be able to see these people for who they were. If I would go in there and try to protect everyone from that, and we should protect our, and how we protect them is by building our community, by making sure that we call those people out and that we identify them for who they are. And that's why I tried to maintain the freedom of speech so that we could, as a community, identify those people and know who they are. If we delete those posts and if we hide them, you know what ends up happening? They start screaming and getting louder and louder and louder in other assets. So you as a person, and I appreciate your question as well, and us as a community, we need to know who they are, identify them, and make sure that they don't speak for us. If we try to quiet them and we try to shut them down, it will get worse. We should. We should speak out against that, and we should, and we ought. But what we need to do is make sure that we still protect everyone's right to speak out against however facet that we believe. And I know that was an issue with you, and I apologize. And I know that we spoke on that as well. And I'm sorry that you had to go through that. I hope that you know that I don't support that during our communication. And I hope everyone here knows that I don't support that kind of interaction. If you come to me and speak to me about that, I can show you. I can tell you. I served in the military. I stood next to people who were all walks of life. They had my back and I had theirs. I prepared to die with them. I'm not going to support that, and I don't. I know, I know. Hold on, one more second, please. I just want everyone in the town to know that, because that has been brought up. People have spoken to me about that and they have come to me and talked to me, and I appreciate that. This is a small town. We love our town. And how we keep it small and how we know everybody is by identifying those outliers and making sure everybody knows so that they don't get pulled in and they don't get influenced by improper speech and things like that.
Can I just ask you, you deleted some other comments from that Facebook page that you cited First Amendment rights on that post?
I'm sorry, I-
And I don't understand why you chose to delete certain comments, but you kept those comments up when I was explaining to people who are personally attacking me. So that's concerning because I don't know what kind of service that I would feel comfortable with coming as a town council member in a position of power.
So the bipartisan process is, in the town council, the position of power that we hold in those aspects need to be upheld and obtained. And I agree with you that that certain situation there, I'm probably going to have to speak with you more about because some of the things that you're referring to, I don't necessarily remember. I do remember our interaction. So I'll have to continue that later.
Can you give some other comments on the same topic?
So Neil, I've got two questions for you. Would you be for, if someone was already serving his capacity, when those comments were made, when it was also a moderator, as was Nick during that time, would you be for removing them from their elected or appointed position or removing them from volunteering in an event? And the only reason I ask is, when the actual post was made on Facebook, and I've said it in public comment, the only division that we have here in Lovettsville is on Facebook. When you go and you knock on people's doors, when you sit in their sidewalks and you have a conversation with them and you talk about the issues that are in town, we all have the same issues. So why don't we look at the issues and the problems that we can solve at our level and not worry about what someone posted on Facebook? But the reason I ask is there was a moderator who was an appointed official, an appointed leader in town at the same time that Nick was also. So he had the power to take that down. The person who said the statement was and is a volunteer for Oktoberfest. So I'm not sure why there's such an issue with not censoring a post on an uncensored site. My perspective is, I roll on by, I understand, I meet people face-to-face. If we have a problem, we talk about it face-to-face, not back and forth on Facebook, not through instant messaging, not through text. We do it face-to-face. And I don't care who you are, where you came from, what your background is. If you're willing to serve the community and volunteer, I want you serving alongside of me and volunteering with me at the multiple events that I'm at.
I feel your pain. I do. Because I'm going through it. I, um, let's up together. No one likes to be hated. I received a wonderful post on my page that I was a horrid Christian, had horrid Christian views, in conspiracy, by somebody who I've met once in my life in this town. I have been questioned on all of my social issues in a nonpartisan municipality election, from both sides. I've had to stand up and defend myself on how I feel about my own personal beliefs. And the one thing that has to stop in this town is people identifying you through perceived associations. I am me and I'm responsible for me. I am not responsible for anybody in this room and their actions. That speaks to them. I am who I am. I believe how I believe. My job here is to serve the community in a municipality position, nonpartisan. I don't believe in hate. I don't believe I should have defended myself and my beliefs to people who are questioning them. I feel your pain, and you can only lead by example, and I hope to do that.
I appreciate the question because I think what it really gets down to is, how are we inclusive as a community at the same time that we're diverse? We have a lot of folks from a lot of different places, a lot of different walks of life that live here in town. Just because we're in a nonpartisan election, we're in a nonpartisan town, doesn't mean we agree. But it does mean that we need civility. It means we do have to come together as a community to solve problems and address issues. Somebody recently asked me what I would do specifically if I saw inappropriate behavior or speech. And the simple answer is I would stand against it. I have. I've done so publicly. I hate referring to Facebook because it has its place in time, but it's also a volatile place. And there was an instance where somebody was actually calling for violence against an individual who was unknown and unnamed, but was being a nuisance in some way, shape, or form. And I very clearly stated why it was inappropriate, why such actions actually were calling for people to violate several statutes at the federal and state level. So I have no problem standing against that. Ultimately, we need to listen to all points of view. It doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to agree. It doesn't mean that multiple people who are talking to me and sharing their viewpoints are going to all be on the same page, but we do have to find consensus. We have to find a way to solve problems and build our community together.
Are there things in the budget that need to be looked at better, things that maybe need to be discontinued, or things that need to be examined by more professional people before we follow through like we've been doing in the past?
Yes, definitely yes. We just spent $30,000 to be told we need a splash pad and ping-pong tables in the middle of town for children. That included the marketing package as well for the logos and everything else. Thank you. That, when we have pipe issues, should have been a decision for any of that money to be earmarked towards those pipes or other things. I'm a teacher. First thing that came to my mind is ping-pong balls and kids running around in traffic. Last thing we need. We're still talking about it. It's coming up. In this week's meeting is a discussion on the town square master plan. So we as residents need to be very aware of what is in that, what are we planning on spending on that. In regards to the $28,000, I'm not going to get into that. I wasn't in the town council. I can't make decisions. That's why things were made. But I can tell you this. This is one thing as a resident that scares me and why I'm stepping up to the plate. To know that that plodding that we were trying to get for our town hall, they invested in and then could not get a loan. What happens if all those pipes break today? Can we get a loan? How are we going to fix it? I'm not saying I want to scare tactic people. I'm not saying I don't wanna scare tactic people, but I'm very much fiscally responsible. I wanna make sure that we're thinking, I would appreciate you not laughing while I'm speaking, so, thank you. I wanna make sure that we are doing what we need to do to plan for future and take care of those things.
I'm gonna start by saying, there, there was a suggestion that, I've, I've interviewed for town council three different times, and that question was pretty much posed to me. And the first thing, the, my response was the water and sewer operations. So in 2014 FY 2015, we took it in-house. At the time, we said it was to save $75,000. In 20 FY 25, that was FY 2013, I'm sorry, in FY 2015, we did a cost benefit analysis that said we were still in good shape. The real dollars that were being spent that year, $298,000. Next year, it was in the 400s. This year, last year, it was 385. So I told them, I didn't have the numbers then, but I told them, I would like to do another cost benefit analysis, because Middleburg did the exact same thing about that time. They brought it in-house, but they outsourced the actual operations. So my perspective is, now that it's over by anywhere from $140,000 to $100,000, maybe we need to redo the cost benefit analysis of our internal operations and see if that's the best piece. Very quickly on the $28,000, the developer gave, as HOA president, the developer gave us a contract too. Mr. Custer was on the board, he can, he can tell you, we had a, a back and forth this thick. I did my homework by looking at deeds, looking at the covenants, and pretty much stood up to the developer and said, you know what? You're expecting our homeowners to sign up for hundreds of thousands of dollars in a perpetual maintenance agreement, so I'm not gonna sign it, and I don't recommend the board signing. He also threatened a lawsuit. We went back to the lawyer and he pretty much said, Mr. Hornbaker, what you've said for the last four months, you are exactly right. So I went to the homeowners and, and told them, unfortunately, you also got a bad land deal that you might wanna look into, as soon as they moved in. Because I wasn't afraid to go to somebody and say, to deliver the same good news or not so good news face to face.
To follow on to the $28,000 issue that we have here, what we really need to look into and really to attack that is that we currently have an attorney, a town attorney that we have on retainer, that is a general attorney. Attorney does not specialize in any such asset or facet. So we need to make sure that if we're going to be entering land deals, we should probably be speaking to attorneys who actually have profession in that type of process. If we're going to go into other, other, other types of contracting and other legal issues with it being, well, I can bring up, we can go with this, with potential controversial issues with, in reference to the town's charters and state bylaws and things like that. If we're going to go after that, we need to speak to an attorney that actually deals with that. If we're going to keep a, an attorney that's on retainer for general purposes, we should probably look into getting a firm that actually has other attorneys that we can speak to rather than just keeping one. Now that may increase our cost, but it will likely reduce the chances of getting $28,000 taken from us, because we enter a bad land deal, because we didn't have any contingencies on it. There are a lot of facets that go into that. We have to make sure that the legal, the legal information that we're bringing, receiving, and where the information we're getting is coming from the exact place it should be coming from, not just a general basis.
So I appreciate the question, because the auditing is very important for any organization, and we need to make sure we understand where the money's going, people are accountable. It's absolutely essential to public trust and to make sure that funds that we have, the resources we have are in fact where they, they should be. Getting specifically to your question, you know, you need to look at the budget, you need to look at where you can make those changes to eliminate, and that's what we're doing right now, we're going through our budget process, I'm going down through the lines, identifying projects, because at the meeting Thursday, when we were talking about changing our not to exceed rates, one of the questions came up, which wasn't legitimate, is that if you're going to reduce tax revenues based on lower tax rates, then you need to find offsets, and that's absolutely true. So we're going through and identifying some of those things that we can pull out of the budget that might be nice to have, but quite honestly, can't afford. And I appreciate that, you know, our, our supervisor, Gary Higgins, I think he just stepped out a moment ago, but, you know, they just went through their budget process, and they have to go through the same, same process that we do to make sure the balance, that the budget is balanced, make sure that we are identifying the things that we need, the things that we want, and prioritizing appropriately. So that's what I'm doing right now, that's what we're gonna do throughout the budget process, make sure that we do have the appropriate elements in there to audit and ensure that the public can trust the numbers that we're giving them.
The town hall was the same as it is now, but maybe a little less crowded. It's very inadequate. Meeting the other night, we had, I think about 15 chairs set up, and they were packed. Granted, some of them were kids there for presentation. There is no room. That building has been inadequate for years. And the goal of building a new town hall was actually encouraged and fostered by the developer. They put in a non-refundable clause in the, in the land deal, and at, at some point, it got missed. But at the same time, when, when the town couldn't obtain the funding, at that point it becomes a, what would we lose if we went, went ahead with expensive funding? It would be a lot more than $28,000. And so, you know, the town has developed on alternative means. The town hall is still inadequate, but there are plans over the, over the next several years to expand the existing facility on existing land owned by the town to be more cost effective, so that the town can provide better services on that front. Again, need to chop away at what can be sacrificed and determine what can't be. But frankly, I, I'm gonna put a lot of the, a lot of the blame for that whole fiasco on the developer.
Do you condone any form of bullying, cyberbullying, or intimidation in our town? Just a yes or no, and I'm gonna sit down.
No.
No. I think we've addressed this quite thoroughly. I think that we need that civility, we need that community engagement.
We, we just go yes or no?
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay. But Commissioner Hornbaker just lied to you all, and I have the proof over here for anyone who wants to look at it. Thanks.
When you personally attack somebody by calling their spouse a racist to another appointed official, it, you're, you're not going, you're not going to... I will go and, and as I said, I will go and face you, as I did. When you are a, a, an appointed member and other appointed members on that commission are told, do not speak to anybody in this town hall without coming to me first, as a leader, I took, I took issue with that. So I am, I, as being, as a person who was bullied, I did call out the leader, the Planning Commission chairman, who, and I told him, it doesn't matter, I will meet, don't worry about who I am meeting with, I will meet with the town manager, I will meet with the planning and zoning director. I don't need to go through you, I will do that. And I will make sure that as we appoint new members to the, to the Planning Commission as a town council person, that we are actually appointing people based on not who they are or whether they're my friend or not, but what they bring to the table. And Bob Custer, you are a perfect example of it. Thank you very much.
Just take a minute or two, make a final statement about why we should vote for you.
Uh, when Tiffany and I thought about where we wanted to raise our kids, we knew immediately Lovetsville was the best place. I enjoyed growing up here as a youngster, we wanted to offer our five kids the same opportunities and the same close knit community that I grew up in, near Long Island. I became involved because I wanted to help our community, I wanted to bring us together and build that, the, the long-term future. We, we built what Tiffany refers to as our forever home, because we intend to be here for a very, very long time. So we need to build, build bridges across different opinions, we need to come together as a community. I was delighted to be here today, I really, I look forward to using the background that I have in policy to help solve the problems that we have in front of us, they're big challenges, and that requires listening to a lot of voices and helping to solve this problem. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Everybody up here, technically we're volunteers, yeah, you get a little tiny stipend, but we probably all spent it already on signs. So, we're doing this from the heart, I'm speaking for everybody, because, because we are. None of us would be sitting here if we didn't care. It's what we're doing. Me personally, I'm, I love the numbers. I love looking at the budget, I love trying to problem solve. I worked for Universal Studios, I was the lady that went into everybody's job and sat down and figured it out, and then re-rate their job using technology and implementing systems with a big conglomerate, Seagram's Corporation. And, and I worked worldwide, we had to come up with systems that met all our needs, and working with groups from all around the world. I love doing that, I like to problem solve, I like to figure things out. I'm a frugal fanny, I like to not spend money, I know there's things that we need and want, but we just have to make choices. So I hope you'll vote for me and know that I have the best interests of the town at heart. I'm doing this because I care and hopefully, and your voices matter, always to me, so my doors open.
My, my background and where I come from is, is making sure that the money that you've got is the money that you got. And that's really where I stand. Renee's excellent at jumping in the numbers, I like to do that too, but my, my, honestly, my brain don't work like hers. I kinda need things a little bit bigger font, little things a little more cleared out, and I, and that's really what I do for my job, is I communicate the, the technical side of things and really try to communicate that out to, to our customers and our potential customers and make it easy for them. And that's really where our, our town really needs to stand on, is communicating to our residents in all walks of life and explaining the search, the situation, the environments that they're, that they're in. We need to really show we're in dire straits here in certain facets of our budget. Our community is in dire straits in being able to provide the utilities that we promised to our community. So if, if, when you walk away here from today, please come and talk to me about more, more things if you can, but understand that you can't walk up to your boss and say, I need a raise, because my car broke down. It's your job to maintain it, and your job to keep it going. We all wanna do that, but as a town council person, I don't think I'm gonna walk to you guys as a resident and say, I need more of your money, because we didn't manage this way or that way.
Leadership is making tough decisions, and I believe over the last few months, there's been some tough decisions that have been made by the town council, and I, I appreciate the town councilmen that are currently seated up here and, and seated in the back. There's additional tough decisions that have to be made over the next four years. I believe that I'm the best candidate, based on my experience in the past six years and engagement in the community and the, and in the events. That would help make the tough decisions and make the decisions that need to be made, slight, slight variation to fund the mountainous project, projects that we have just over the horizon from a capital improvement perspective. Since being on, on the Planning Commission, I have been voted by my peers to serve as vice chair over the last two months. It, I, it was done while I was, I chose to run, but I was not doing it for a title, I was doing it to make sure that the vice chair, or the, I'm sorry, the chairman that we elected and any future chairman would be comfortable enough to run the meeting, should I go on, and I hope I do, to serve on the town council. I've been serving the community in various aspects for the last 10 years. I show up to the meetings, I talk on behalf of the concerned citizens, I make statements as the decisions are made, such as the trash fee, the increase in water rates, as the decisions are being made, because I am, I'm looking from the perspective of the actual citizen in town and how it impacts them every day. So that I will continue to do that. I will continue also to do the due diligence to understand what the issue at hand is, not just get a, a four-page rationale that may come from staff or somewhere else, and make, and bring other ideas, other facts about the decision that's being made to the table to make sure we know everything about the decision that we're being made. I ask you for your vote on May 1st. I have chosen to align with two members that have been just, almost just as engaged in either the town, they've shown up for the last at least three years, or in the community through the events.
I have a lot invested emotionally in this community, and I, I also mentioned that I'm a librarian, but I neglected to mention another certification, I'm a project manager. And as such, my career has been about solving problems. And since I'm a, since I work for a federal contractor, it's dealing with, you, you don't get assets in terms of money, you, you may have some people to work with, but you have to figure out how to solve the problems that you're faced with. I want to be able to apply that to the town, I want to, to apply my communication abilities, which may not be particularly evident at the moment, to listen to people and be able to, to bring people together and to help build this community emotionally as well as, as physically and fiscally, to, to improve the, the home that we all share. And I, again, I hope all of you will be at the polls on May 1st, and I hope that you will vote for, for the best candidates that, that fit your vision for, for this town. I, I might also be remiss in saying, the one we're missing is my next door neighbor, Meredith Kopp. She is at a memorial service for, for a dear friend, a dear friend's family member today. And I'd like you to familiarize yourself with her and her, and her mission as well. And again, we'll see you on May 1st. Thank you.
I would like to say I am not a very front and center type of person, I've always been behind the scenes. I have helped with events in town as I could, with setting up for, for May Fest, 3rd of July, Patriot Day, getting my, my Cub Scout out to help do trash on Oktoberfest, and, and trying to be there as I could, and getting my, and getting my son involved to, to understand what his civic duty within town and having to do the community and, and, and just be there for everybody around. So I may not have always been up front, but now's my time. I feel like my time is here. I want to be out there for you, I want to work on these things as a town, I want to work with the council, it's, it's not just me making a decision, it's me taking my leadership and how I bring everybody along with me for the ride in, in, in debate on how we can make everything better. You know, it may be one point of view, it may be the other, but where can we find the common ground? How can we do that? And that's what I wanna accomplish, I wanna be able to make the best decisions for this town. It is town council's responsibility to lead the town and administration to the success to working through budgets, capital improvements, community events, and other issues that may be on the table. Using my skills that I have acquired through my jobs, I feel that they will bring the best out in me and will help bring out the best in our town council and within our town. I'll work to help Lovetsville grow responsibly and become the place where everybody understands that the fun never stops here. The small town life still does exist and will always exist, and it'll be the place that everybody wishes they would call home. Thank you, everyone.